Good evening. Welcome to this meeting of Westminster Mayor.
Good work.
Good evening. Welcome to this meeting of Westminster Mayor. The council meets here at City Hall on the second and fourth Mondays of each day. Please note that council meetings, although open to the public here at City Hall, are also available and streamed live in the city's YouTube page, as well as the Community Media Center channel on the website. Now, we begin every meeting with the pledge of the flag, followed by a brief time.
I declare this is the United States of America, to the Republic of Japan, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if you'd like to see any buttons, please take a moment to silence your cell phones or any other electronic devices you have with you that might otherwise interrupt the meeting. Thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information faculty and council will be using are available online on the city's website. Copies of the agenda are available here in front of the rooms for folks who are attending the meeting. I'd like to make a statement for the record. I'm about to close the meeting of Monday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty five. In accordance with General Provisions Article Section three dash three zero six C two of the Evitated Code of Maryland, and without objection, it is noted that the minutes of tonight's meeting reflect that the common council met in a closed meeting on Monday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty five, eight thirty four P M, pursuant to General Provisioned Articles, Section three dash three zero five B four, to consider a matter that concerns a proposal for a business or industrial organization to locate, expand, or remain in the state, and B five, to consider the investment of public funds. The motion to close the meeting was made by Mr. Hoff, seconded by Ms. Gilbert. Voting in favor were Mr. De Hoff, Ms. Gilbert, Mr. Hoff, and myself. Mr. Corlax was presiding that evening. Following staff members attended the meeting. City Administrator Impulse, Chief of Police Ledwell, and Director of Finance Rogers. Common councils took no official action during the meeting. The closed meeting adjourned at nine thirty P M. Thank you. Now, we'd like to take a minute or a few minutes to hear from our auditors. The city does not see annual audits, and we're very pleased we already got the report received on how that went with us tonight from our auditing firm, S V and Company LLC. It was Mr. Bill Seymour and Mr. Nellie Gates. Thank you very much.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Seymour. I'm an engagement partner with S V and Company. This represents our required communications completion of a financial statement audit. We have a presentational. All right, there we go. Thank you. We have a presentational walkthrough fairly high level. Please stop me with any questions that you may have. The scope of services, we were engaged to perform an audit of the June thirty, twenty twenty four financial statements. Performance of the Uniform Guided Single Audit, that is a required compliance audit when you spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal funds. Submission of the data collection form. Certain agreed upon procedures related to the Department of Housing and Urban Development's REACT filing. We provided limited assistance in the drafting of the statements. We reviewed the uniform financial report, that is a report that takes your statements and puts them in a fit and format that works for the Department of Legislative Services, and as well as working with management on a year round basis as items come up. The summary of our results, we've issued an unmodified, or if you will, clean opinion on the financial statements. That's the best opinion that we are allowed to issue under generally accepted auditing standards. We also issued an unmodified opinion on the Uniform Guided Single Audit Report. During the course of our audit, we did not note any instances of fraud, but caution our audit is not a fraud audit, that would be different in scope. However, professional standards require that we maintain a helping skepticism for fraud, look for fraud where we test, and through those limited procedures, we did not note any. We discovered no material weaknesses in internal controls. We noted one significant deficiency related to controls of our payroll. Effectively, there were a certain number of time sheets in our selection that weren't approved through the normal process. I would note that last year, we had four, three findings, three findings. Two of those were cleared, and one of those will be cleared by just a matter of timing. Fortunately, when you do a single audit, you're basically three quarters of the year through when you find an item. So if you find something, it almost takes two years to clear it. So the item we received will clear it for next year. Because it was outstanding for three quarters of the year, we can't say it's cleared as of yet. And we received the full cooperation from management. Well, I think Teresa and her team for helping out. Renata?
So what you see here on this slide is our S P C R approach. It's a risk based approach, and it is a funnel for a reason. We spent a lot of time in the beginning, planning, assessing, controls, testing, and then based on those testing and those results, we can then perform the running of the procedures and determine how many more procedures are needed there. We do use the COSSO framework when evaluating internal controls. That framework has five interrelated components, which is the five items you see here. Control environment, risk assessment, control activities, information communication, as well as monitoring. And based on those items we've tested and reviewed, we determine that all five items are designed and operating effectively. When evaluating key processes, specifically when we are performing those walkthroughs, discussing items of management, testing transactions and testing items standardly, we've looked at treasury estimation, financial reporting, revenue, and we have assessed that those items are operating, designed and operating effectively. And then the remaining items here. As Bill mentioned, there were a couple of findings reported, payroll, as well as some grant compliance items, but remaining items are all designed and operating effectively. All good there. So as far as the single audit, so the city did spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand federal dollars, so we performed a single audit. There were two major programs that were tested. With those two major programs, we tested ninety eight percent of the total federal awards. The city did not qualify as a lower risk entity, basically meaning that we had to, we had to audit forty percent of the seat funds, that is twenty percent, but we were way above that at that ninety eight percent coverage. We did issue an unmodified opinion, and we had a couple of different findings, mainly noncompliance on the housing choice voucher, or the finding items for this year. Here's some financial highlights on the statement and acquisitions, some comparisons current year and prior year. This is a summarized version of the financial statements. On the asset side, the main items there on the current assets is cash and investments, which we did perform some substantive procedures of testing there. Cash flow assets remained pretty consistent year over year. There's a couple of projects that are still in progress that we audited. We'll go to the next one. Yep. And then as far as changes in acquisitions, here you can see some of the revenues and the expenses year over year. The main item on the revenue side is really the grants that have been decreasing the revenue, and the main item there is that the ARPA funding that has been spent during the year.
And during the course of doing the audit of the numbers, there was nothing that was special in there or items that caused additional attention or items that we needed to bring to your attention. The remaining part of our presentation goes through our specific required communications. This is our opportunity and our responsibility to chat with you kind of what's under the hood of the audit. You know, when I mentioned earlier, we issued an unmodified opinion. As an auditor, there's lots of ways that you can get there. You know, it could be lots of journal entries. There could be accounting policies that are just barely acceptable. We could have disagreements with management. We have none of those items to report going through the audit. You know, we mentioned some of the findings, but they are more compliance and very minor. And in a lot of ways for the single audit, unfortunately, you know, once you don't have one thing, it becomes a finding. Or that none of those would have risen to kind of what we would consider like internal control findings over the financial reporting process. So I'll stop there, see if there's any questions. Once again, I want to thank Teresa and her team for all of their help in getting us through the audit.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions for our auditors? We won't see the copy of the report, we haven't had a chance to review it. Thank you very much. Sorry. Thanks very much for the report. We appreciate it very much, and we appreciate all the good work. And we know you all spent a lot of time there with the city offices. You landed there a few times, and pretty much appreciate the good reporting. Congratulations, Ms. Emerson, Ms. Rogers, and double finance team, and all the managers for doing such a great job this year. It's, I think, is one of the best audit reports I can recall as ever again, so very pleased.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. One more presentation we had to do before we move on. When Dr. Joy Jaskin became president of McDaniel College, she promised that she would be much more engaged with the city than the college in the past. And one of her promises was to set as member of a stewardship team to city council meetings on a regular basis to share with us what's happening up on the hill and take back what's happening in the city. And tonight, we're very pleased to have both senior member of her staff, Dr. Flavio Sotoy, the Provost of the College, here with us to share some news. Thank you very much for coming.
Well, thank you. Good to see everyone, and just very brief updates. First, thanks to Dr. Mona Becker. Always so nice to collaborate with you and the council. And it's been so nice over the recent months to be able to collaborate over breakfast and interact and plan together. So the first thing I would like to say is a word of thanks to Westminster City. We had two students over our January term that did internships. This is the second year we've done this. We had a student in the Budget and Finance Department and a student in the Economic Development Area of the city, and they had, as they report, very good experiences, which we're really happy about. I'd like to share that upcoming, there are two information sessions for a new program that the college has launched called the Carroll County Scholars Program. And this program, these two information sessions are open to ninth graders and eleventh graders and their parents, of course, to learn about the Carroll County Scholars Program, which is really an initiative of the college to help students and families in Carroll County understand the whole college process, to demystify it, help students find the right college for them, whether it's McDaniel or someplace else. If students complete this program, they're awarded a one hundred thousand dollar scholarship to the college, which is twenty To the college, which is twenty five thousand dollars a year, which is a great benefit for students in Carroll County. Who want to attend McDaniel College. And and the last, and I'll leave a handout as I go here in this chair. About that program for anyone who might be interested in learning more about when those sessions are and how how to attend and register. And then the last update is that. The college publishes semesterly a. A booklet called McLive. It it's all of the college's events and activities. Most of which are open to everyone in the Westminster community. And there are arts, there's theater, there's music. There's any number of programs that I would encourage you to come up to the college and and take part in, they're really lovely. So again, I'll leave that here as well, and. If you are on our campus and you happen to see me there, I attend a lot of events, please come up to me. I'd love to chat with you and welcome you to the college. And thank you again to the mayor and to the council for all of your hospitality and good collaborative teamwork over these last few years. So thank you so much, and I'll leave this here.
Great, great, thank you, Dr. Lo, we very appreciate it very much. Any other questions for Dr. Lo? Thanks again.
One quick question. When did the students get back for their spring semester?
Are they back?
Yes, they started today. It was exciting.
I knew that, I saw more cars on my end of Green Street.
There's still a lot of snow on the campus and there's certainly, it's. Some of the steps are still difficult to navigate from the shorting around.
Yeah, they're not.
Yeah, they're fine.
Thank you very much. Right, now it's time for a public hearing, we have a couple of public hearings tonight. And here in the city of Westminster, the mayor presides over this, I will turn the chair over to Dr. Becker.
Right, thank you very much, Mr. President. This is the Public Hearing for Annexation Resolution Number Twenty Four Dash Eleven. Annexation Number Eighty Three, Optimum Properties LLC Petition for Annexation. Enlarging the corporate boundaries of the city of Westminster by annexing into the city certain property containing. Plus or minus three point five seventeen acres located at the northwestern end of Kent Terrace beyond its intersection with Woodside Drive. And generally to the east of Starry Night Drive. Continuous to and adjoining the city's existing corporate boundaries consisting of real property identified as tax account number. Zero seven dash zero zero one, two two three, comma, map, zero zero four six, comma, grid, zero zero two one, comma. And parcel, zero zero three three. And before we take public comments, I'll ask Mr. Depot if he'd like to give his report.
Yes, thank you. Optimum Properties LLC seeks the annexation of property containing three point five seven two acres as described by the mayor. The annexation area is today zoned R twenty thousand residence district in Carroll County. The petitioner is requesting the property be zoned to R ten thousand residential zone. This did require a waiver from Carroll County because it is an upzoning from R twenty thousand to R ten thousand. The applicant did submit that waiver and that waiver was accepted by the county. The petitioner is proposing at some point to subdivide the property to into four to seven residential lots. On October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, Annexation Resolution Twenty Four Eleven. Was introduced, including the annexation plan by the mayor and common council, allowing the process to begin. On October twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, Annexation Resolution Twenty Four Eleven, along with the annexation plan pursuant to the Annotated Code of Maryland. Was emailed to Carroll County and forwarded to the Maryland Department of Planning. On November twenty second, twenty twenty four, Maryland Department of Planning forwarded to review comments to the city, this is in attachment five of your report. On December fourth, twenty twenty four, the Carroll County Planning and Zoning Commission met to discuss the annexation. And provided a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. On December fifth, twenty twenty four, the Board of County Commissioners of Carroll County discussed Annexation Eighty Three and voted to provide. A comment letter documenting the review process, comments received during the Carroll County sixty day review period, and that's in attachment six of the report. On January sixteenth, twenty twenty four, the city's Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on Annexation Eighty Three. The Planning and Zoning Commission forwarded Annexation Eighty Three, including Annexation Resolution Twenty Four Eleven. And the annexation plan to the city of Westminster's mayor and common council with a favorable recommendation. Department of Community Plan Development recommend that the mayor and common council adopt Annexation Plan Resolution Twenty Five Two. Approving the annexation plan for Annexation Eighty Three, as provided in attachment one of the report. And then adopt Annexation Resolution Twenty Four Eleven, approving Annexation Eighty Three. As provided in attachment two of this report, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Hearing nine nine, we'll start with our first witness, our first hearing, so Mr. Perpan. Oh, we switch order. I guess, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone, Kelly Schaefer Miller, I'm going to remain seated if that's okay, so that I'm not blocking anyone behind me. Seventy three East Main Street, Westminster, Maryland, two one one five seven, I am here tonight on behalf of the applicant Optimum Properties. Represented by Frank Potopan, who is present and seated behind me. We also have with us Randy Beckel, here at the Annexation Plan discuss. So we are here and happy to answer any questions that the council might have. Briefly, I will say that first of all, there is a second public hearing following this, which is also the Pota, the property owned by the Potopans. So all of the facts and information that I'm sharing with you as part of this is the same for the second hearing as well. This property is zoned R twenty in the county. We are requesting R ten zoning in the city, that we did receive the zoning waiver from the county commissioners. And in reality, the request for R ten zoning in the city. Will not result in increased density of this property. It's being done because in order to comply with the bulk requirements of zoning district for. The R ten in the city versus R twenty in the county, we will still end up with the same lot yields that you would fit under the county's R twenty zoning. So the request is also consistent with the area that joins R ten zoned property in the city. The other side of it does join R twenty zoned property in the county. But I will say that if you look at the size of those lots, I can assume that those were clustered through the county's approval process. Because they are smaller than twenty thousand square feet lots. So I think that this will really be a nice blend between the two existing developments. And this did, prior to requesting annexation, this did go through a water and sewer amendment process. Where this property was brought into the service area and that was approved by MD and has finalized that process. So we are here happy to answer any questions that you have. BPR has done some concept layouts. But we are not here tonight requesting subdivision approval, we understand that any, before any subdivision is approved. This would have to be applied for and then go through the normal planning commission process for that. So tonight, we're here requesting approval of the annexation. And like I said, all of these facts are going to be the same for the following property. I'll be here again. So if you do have any questions, we're here and happy to answer them. Thank you.
There?
Yes, sir.
So are we looking at, are we contemplating houses that are similar to the ones behind Starry Night? Expectation?
Single family residential, yes, yes. No questions? Mr. Potopan, would you like to speak? Mr. Bashnall? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If no one else wishes to speak on this matter, we'll call the public hearing closed at seven twenty two. The second public hearing. Called at order at seven twenty three. Public hearing for Annexation Resolution Number Twenty Four Dash Thirteen, Annexation Number Eighty Five. Ellen Potopan Petition for Annexation. Enlarging the corporate boundaries in the city of Westminster by annexing into the city certain property containing plus or minus five point four seven acres. Located at the western end of Glen Drive and generally to the south of the western end of Starry Night Drive. Continuous to and adjoining the city's existing corporate boundaries consisting of real property identified as tax account number. Zero seven dash four three, four zero eight nine, map, zero zero four six, grid, zero zero one two one. And parcel, one six four eight. Before we take public comment, we'll ask Mr. Depot if he's got anything he'd like to report.
Yes, thank you, this is going to sound very familiar. So Ellen Grant and Tyler Potopan collectively, the petitioners. Seek the annexation of property containing five point four seven acres, as again described by the mayor. This property also is currently zoned R twenty thousand residence district in the in Carroll County. And the petitioner is requesting in R ten thousand residential zone in the city. This also required a zoning waiver which was submitted and accepted by Carroll County. The petitioner is proposing to subdivide the property into eleven to fifteen. Single family detached dwellings, and to answer the question of the previous one, this this mimics what's surrounding the property. These two properties, although listed as different entities, and that's why we process them differently. They're essentially owned by the same family and will be developed together. But because they were separate properties, not adjoining each other and listed as separate property owners, that's why we did two separate annexation requests. On October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, Annexation Resolution Twenty Four Thirteen. Was introduced, including the annexation plan by the mayor and common council to begin the annexation process. On October twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, Annexation Resolution Twenty Four Thirteen. Along with the annexation plan pursuant to the Annotated Code of Maryland was emailed to Carroll County and forwarded to the Maryland Department of Planning. On November twenty second, twenty twenty four, Maryland Department of Planning forwarded its review comments to the city, and this is in attachment five of your of your report. On December fourth, twenty twenty four, the Carroll County Planning and Zoning Commission met to discuss Annexation Eighty Five and to provide recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. On December fifth, twenty twenty four, the Board of County Commissioners discussed Annexation Eighty Five and voted to provide. A comment letter documenting documenting their review process and comments received during the Carroll County sixty day review period, and this is in attachment six of the report. On January sixteenth, twenty twenty four, the city's Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on Annexation Eighty Five. The Planning and Zoning Commission forwarded Annexation Eighty Five, including Annexation Resolution Twenty Four Thirteen and the Annexation Plan. To the city of Westminster Mayor and Common Council with a favorable recommendation. Department of Community Plan Development recommends that the mayor and common council adopt Annexation Plan Resolution Twenty Five O Three. Approving the Annexation Plan for Annexation Eighty Five. Then recommends the mayor and common council adopt Annexation Resolution Twenty Four Thirteen, approving Annexation Eighty Five. And that completes my report and available for any questions.
What's the plan in terms of they're going to come in off of Glen Drive? For access to the property?
Yes, in in this case, at the dead, at the end of that roadway, you would have access in the property prior to this. Would have access not only off of the county roadway, but also connecting to Stonegate. So we provide that connection, which would be nice when this develops.
But that's, it's not going to connect back to Starry Night, because you've got houses in between there, right?
Yeah, it will not. Yes, it will be dead end cul-de-sac, that would be my, they do have the concept plans and that's what we would recommend, or that's what we envision, a cul-de-sac.
Mr. President, they, being the exhibitional planning and zoning, they, when it was presented, the planning and zoning, they briefly showed us the rough concept plan. And that, and it's, and that's a cul-de-sac back there. And that's the concept, it won't connect.
Any other questions for Mr. Depot?
Yeah, ma'am.
Yes.
So, Mr. Depot, so obviously the two properties are not connected, what 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 about this property in between? I mean, I mean, you can tell us about that or or expectations on what's, what might happen there.
You mean property in between?
Well, they don't, the two properties don't connect.
The wanted, the wanted.
Yeah, in between, there's single family detached dwellings that property go all the way back and and touch Stonegate. Yeah, yeah.
I couldn't tell that. Alright, thank you.
And then the land to the west is actually existing forestry, I believe, for the Starry, of Stonegate subdivision.
Well, I have one more question. I don't know if this is for Mr. Depot, for our audience members, I was just curious what the anticipated price point of the homes were going to be.
I'm not determined at this point.
Still probably have a few years of something.
But your intent is to be comparable, it's, as far as like.
If I was building today, it would be very comparable to the the resales that are occurring in Stonegate this time.
It's going to go more towards that end than than the wood side.
Yeah, it'll, it'll work, yeah.
I have one question.
So, yeah, I do. So it kind of goes back to the same question related to access. So obviously the other property, we're already coming in, we're we're maintaining, we're really, we're plowing streets. We have the service that can access that through existing city property or kind of off that that road there. This one's, this one's definitely more remote, the way you're going to, we. We're going to go well outside of the city into the county to then access this this relatively small group of homes. Are we going to be providing? Snow plowing and, you know, road maintenance and things like that? You know, trash pickup, all of those things and and. And is that, you know, that that road, or is that going to work? And I'm not trying to make this, I just want to make sure we're looking out for the fact that we're going to have to provide services, you know, to to these homes, which. It it's a little more remote how to get to it, and that could be overstating that.
And we we will be required to provide those services to the properties once annexed and developed into the city. We can certainly work with Carroll County Public Works and our Public Works. On how to maybe snow plow, because you're right, there will be that disconnect of woodside drive between these two developments.
Yeah, we're typically way in front of the county when it comes to plowing.
Yeah.
Because they're plowing ten times the amount of roads that we are. You know, it's often unplowed roads until you get to the city and then it's paved. I'm not sure this is a problem, I just want to kind of think about.
Things that we can certainly look at at times of subdivision, when the applications are coming to planning commission, how we provide their services.
I believe, Madam Mayor, I believe planning and zoning brought up that similar concern regarding the snow plowing.
Yes.
You know, obviously trash and and the. You know, the maintenance of the streets is big for cities, but sometimes, from our understanding, sometimes you, there's cooperation between the. The two different public works departments to kind of do what makes sense, so.
So, would you like to add anything?
Again, Kelly Schaefer Miller, I will add that we also have Ellen Potopan here for this annexation as well, for his wife. And happy to answer any questions, the conversation did come up about maintenance, and if you'll recall, this conversation also came up. Several months or maybe even a year or two ago with the larger industrial annexation that came in down in Stonechapel and Avondale. Where there was a situation where it would just not make sense, and there is a. A sort of history where the county and the city will work together in terms of snow plowing and those sorts of things on those roads. So I could envision something similar, oh, when a subdivision plan is being processed on on this as well. But again, happy to answer any other questions, I didn't have to ask, we have the same team.
Mr. and Mrs. Perpan, would you like to say anything? Very fun, okay. Any, any other questions from the council? Right, if no one else wishes to speak on the subject, we will call the public hearing closed at seven thirty two.
Alright, thank you very much for the handup. Move on now with. Next item on the agenda with the consent count, we have two items on the consent count, we have a motion, Bill Green, consent group to approve, Mr. President. And a motion by Mr. Chukwaki, there a second? The second by Mr. Gilbert, although the panel will be making a consent count, you can say aye.
Aye, aye.
This little vote they made, yeah, I seen the animal on the top, the consent count really good. Report from there, Dr. Becker.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I don't have very much to say, it's been. I, pretty quiet to meet some of the city, I know that the leasing committee report's following up. The one thing I just did want to mention was, thanks again for all the departments at the city that. Come out when we have a snow event, especially when it's over a weekend, sorry, this Gilbert, as the last one was. uh, come out when we have a snow event, um, especially when it's over a weekend. Sorry, this Gilbert, as the last one was. Um, but, um, again, appreciate and hear wonderful comments about the cleaning of the street, being timely and getting things cleared. So, um, again, thank you. That's my report.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Becker. Alright, move on to, uh, the reports for committees. Uh, Mr. Dale has not with us this evening, Economic and Community Development Committee, Mr. Huff.
Um, I don't have anything to report this evening. Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you. Um, Finance Committee, I'll support the Finance Committee, did meet this morning, uh, reviewing contracts with the city administrator. Uh, nothing to report for the Personnel Committee, Public Safety, Mr. Kabachi.
Thank you, Mr. President. On January fifteenth, the Police Department provided Maryland-certified Police Officer Jacqueline.
Trump tense.
Thank you. Uh, with the job offer, Officer Trump tense will be in, uh, will begin employment with the Police Department on February thirteenth. She brings approximately eight years of Maryland municipal policing experience with her, as well as many advanced qualifications, including first-line supervisory training, which is pretty fantastic. On January fourteenth, Officer Barbara Bogan received the Officer of the Quarter Award for Outstanding Performance during the last quarter of twenty twenty four. Um, and, you know, some of the things that 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 she won this for, that were in that certificate for her were things like showing a really great positive attitude, willingness to learn. Um, she's new, she's just off of her field training, correct? So she's a a new officer, and she's certainly motivated. She made eleven arrests, handled, uh, two hundred and twenty traffic violations, uh, including three DWIs, and she affected two felony assault arrests that involved weapons. So that's pretty good for an officer running out of, uh, field training. Um, I also wanted to take a moment and just talk a little bit about the the police station. There's been some nice improvements, uh, going on over there, and there's been incredible interdepartmental cooperation that's been taking place between your staff going over you and wiring up the consoles and 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 I I'm blown away by the data system that you guys have installed where you're allowing the officers to go in and look at data and pull up reports and arrests and hotspots and, you know, the chief has been since we interviewed him for the job, his whole mantra's been data-driven policing. And with you now doing what you're doing, allowing him to even take that to the next level is incredibly impressive, right? And that's, I asked him in our public safety meeting, and I was like, what what software are we using for that, you know? What how much are we paying for that software system? And we're not paying anything for it other than you, you know, your time and effort, so that's impressive. Um, Public Works is doing yeoman's work on on doing jobs that we often would outsource, like putting in flooring and painting and things like that, that would typically cost the taxpayers a lot of money, but it it's not costing anywhere near as much as it would because we're doing all the work in-house. And from what I understand, it's coming out very nicely, although I do wanna spend a little more time taking a look at that soon. So I just wanted to say kudos to the entire staff, and I'm sure I'm missing other departments that are probably participating. Um, and then lastly, I just wanted to make a comment, you know, we we were uh, short-staffed for quite some time, um, as were almost all police departments in the country, um, because of a lot of stuff at the national levels, very difficult to find police officers, hire them, retain them. But the chief has, and his staff and his leadership have really done an incredible job of of getting the staffing levels back up. And I think we see it. We see low crime. We don't see, not that we ever had big crime problems, but it it's safe, and and that's because of, in great part, due to your efforts. You know, you've talked about you wanna be proactive and have teams out there doing things where they're looking for issues, not just reacting to them, and and we're doing that. And and I'm not gonna get into the details and examples of what those things are, but but it's happening, and I just wanted to compliment you and your your leadership team and the entire department on an excellent job. Okay, appreciate it. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Kabachi. Public Works Committee, Ms. Gilbert.
Um, well, I'll get into the details. Um, Public Works, as everybody knows, has been busy with the winter storm, um, from the sixteenth to the twentieth, and just from just some general stats, um. The snowstorm, our employees covered two thousand and one hundred and eleven miles of snow removal. Thirty-five employees were at work through those days, six hundred and eighty-six hours total. Three hundred and forty-nine point eight tons of salt were used at a total cost of forty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and some change. Um, so I thought those were some nice stats to share. And that's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Um, recreational parks, would you like to update that for us as well?
Um, very short report tonight. Um, Public Works is gearing up for all the new year events, um, and um, there's, and starting with the planning of the Celtic Cantor, that will take place on March eighth, and more will come from Public Works later. That's all I have.
Alright, very good. Thank you, Gilbert, and, uh, Mr. Deha, this again, not here for the technology today report. Uh, now move on to council comments and discussion. This is the opportunity for council members to, um, share their thoughts on anything that is not in the committee report or elsewhere on the agenda. Mr. Kabachi.
Thanks, Mr. President. I do actually have something surprising. I rarely make a council comment. And I will, I I I spent some time out at Wakefield Valley over the weekend. My wife and I went out there and kind of checked out like you have going on, and it's just spectacular, you know, just so impressive. And I know it's been a long time coming, and you had a lot of vision that kind of is going in place up there. I'm I'm starting to talk about it more out in the community with people now that it's getting closer to fruition, and the excitement level is building for sure, and now that people can see it and kind of have an idea of what it's gonna look like. You know, the the and the Durbin House looks looks nice, you know, generally with the paint and everything, which we want to figure out what's gonna peel on the front with that roof coming down, but it looks great, and I just wanted to compliment you. It's really coming along nicely. And, uh, you can really see what what you're doing out there, so great work.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Kabachi. Ms. Gilbert.
Um, no, 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 uh, just a couple of things. Um, last week, oh, this is pretty lonely. Oh, no, it really did go away. Hold on a minute. Uh, let's see if I can remember this off the top of my head, because I just Xed out my notes. Um, last week, I attended the, um, State of the County and, um, the Commissioner's Reception. And just as an FYI, um, next week, February the sixth, um, the, uh, County Commissioners are hosting several sessions, several, I don't wanna call them work sessions, but they're gonna be, um, sharing the, um, County Master Plan. And, uh, the first stop is going to be in February at the Carroll Community College Route Eight one hundred from one to six, if anybody's interested in seeing what the county has up for their plans for, I don't know how many years in the in the forefront, but, um, the master plan will be revealed, um, so if anybody's interested in attending that. And I just wanna shout out also, um, uh, um, uh, let me see, hold on, this is what happens when I don't have my notes. Um, on January twenty-third, um, Councilman Kabachi and Councilman Huth and myself, uh, were at a Hey Westminster event, and I just wanted to shout out to all the group of that surprised me with Hey Westminster. It was a great evening, but it also demonstrated how wonderful our community, um, gets together and, um, supports our local entrepreneurs and each other, and just the ideas, the creativity, um, was amazing to see that night. So, uh, a shout out to all those people involved and all the recipients, so that's all I have.
Alright, thank you very much. Mr. Hoff.
Uh, yes, I wanted to, uh, just kind of give a shout out to the Planning Department, um, because as you will notice, under ordinances resolutions, pretty much everything there is tied into the Planning Department, and I've I've either seen it through Economic and Community Development or as an Ex officio on Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, which I also commend our commission. We've been doing a lot of work, particularly on this, uh, land map amendment related to the Green Street project that has come up later tonight. Uh, and I just wanna, you know, give a shout out to the Planning Department for all their hard work related to all these items. Um, and I will also say, I do think, uh, the Hey Westminster event was great, and I think it really speaks highly of our community and the community members that we have. You know, we try to do some really um, neat things for the City of Westminster in our elected positions. Uh, but having community members that are actively involved in the community, trying to do good in the community as well is just so critical to our success, and I really think, quite frankly, makes Westminster unique and special. Um, and and some of the people involved in Hey Westminster are are really doing some awesome things, uh, for the community. Um, so I really commend them as well. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Hoff. Great. Move on now to the next item, which is bids. We have one bid on this evening. Approval of purchase, a pickup truck, Apple Ford located at eight eight nine nine Stanford Boulevard, Baltimore, Maryland, under Baltimore County Contract zero 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 four five zero four in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Ms. Imals.
Thank you, sir. The city's adopted to fiscal year twenty-five capital budget allocates funding for the retrofit of a street department dump truck. Since this request was approved in the budget, the truck, however, has been diagnosed with blown engine, and the turbo needs to be replaced. The Streets Department has decided this truck should be removed from the fleet and replaced with a smaller version, which will fulfill the current and future needs of the department. The requested dump truck is available by an existing contract between Baltimore County and Apple Ford. Westminster's procurement code allows the city to peg you back on this competitively awarded contract. The vehicle being purchased is a Ford F five five zero with dump truck, I'm sorry, dump body, salt spreader, and plow. Further information is attached. Additionally, the vehicle's ready to go, uh, and can be purchased and on back in the fleet before the next snowstorm comes, if it's approved tonight. The cost of the unit, including all of those accoutrements I just mentioned, is a hundred and fifteen thousand, um. Again, the fiscal year twenty-five budget for this project is a hundred and forty thousand dollars, because we were intending to retrofit that particular truck, so it's a little bit expensive. Or a little bit more money allocated. Therefore, staff recommends that the Mayor and Common Council approve a bid to purchase a pickup truck from Apple Ford under the Baltimore County Contract zero 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 four five zero four in the amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That concludes my report.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Imals. Also, though, I I, next snowstorm, you know something we don't know?
Oh, I snowed on my birthday.
We will have snow next weekend.
Well, okay.
I'm gonna forge.
It, snow is in the forecast, uh, two weeks from now.
Okay, good to know.
I'm working on the snows.
Alright, we get enough, right? They have a motion, uh, to approve the date.
I'll make a motion to approve the date.
Motion by Ms. Gilbert, is there a second?
I will second, Mr. President.
There's a second by Mr. Hoff. Um, any questions or comments on this?
Mr. President, one thing, when they first got the packet and opened it up, it's all a pickup truck for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We're really high, it's like an X L T Larry, you know, leather. We probably shouldn't call it a pickup truck. This is a commercial, but it's very large, so it should be calling this one, because it's not a pickup truck.
It is a very large.
Yes, the pickup truck is not a pickup truck, so just make sure we're clear on that.
Thank you for making that distinction.
We upgraded to RAPD.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Alright, there are no more discussions. There's not a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, yeah, I seem to have the ayes have it, and the approval, it is approved. Thank you, Ms. Imals.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, we now have a series of ordinances and resolutions, so talk with your seat. First item is adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero nine, tobacconist and vape shop amendment, ordinance of.
Sorry, Mr. President. I apologize.
We'll show it there. Um, ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster, amended chapter one sixty-four, zoning and subdivision of land of the city code, amend Article One of General Provisions, and add definitions of specialty shop, tobacconist and vape shop. amend Article seven A, mixed-use infill zone, Article eight, B business zone, Article eight V, B downtown business zone, Article nine, C B central business zone, and Article twelve, P I planned industrial zone, add tobacconist and vape shops as permitted uses. amend Article eleven A, N C neighborhood commercial zone, add vape shops as a permitted use. amend Article twenty, Special Provisions, impose certain restrictions on the location of vape shops. And to renumber without substantive change, the list of permitted uses in statehood sense. Mr. Depot?
Thank you. On January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Mayor and Common Council held a public hearing on ordinance twenty four oh nine. Um, there were public comments primarily related to two seventy-nine East Main Street, which would potentially be affected by this ordinance. The Mayor and Common Council closed the public hearing, and they voted to continue its decision on ordinance twenty twenty-four to its January twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five meeting tonight. Um, the two two seventy-nine East Main Street, the, um, as we stated in the last public hearing, staff tries to work with businesses, and we are now working with the applicant and that business if there, to see if there is a way to allow that business to come into compliance with the ordinance. And with that, I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Depot. Um, let's get a motion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hoff.
I would like, because I I know my understanding at least is there's still some things going back and forth to try to, and there's two different versions of the ordinance. I would like to get, once again, continue our consideration of the adoption of this ordinance to our February tenth meeting, um, just to kind of give things a little bit more time to to, uh, digest so that we can make a decision on which version of the ordinance. Uh, because remember, there was a a different version than the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended than what staff recommended.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go up first. Eventually that, so we are going to need a motion.
Do, I'll make a motion to.
Hold on. I think we should have a motion to adopt, and then I think we should have a motion to postpone the sort of consideration. We don't have to vote, we have motion to adopt. But I don't think we can just since it's not really before us yet.
It could be handled like a motion to amend your agenda, which means it would be in order, but I I think your initial instinct is how it would ordinarily go. You would call it.
Right.
And then there'd be a subordinate motion.
Yeah, I think that's not what it got, yeah. Alright, so let's do it that way.
Can you explain that?
Yeah, so and of course, you know, just per his understanding, when a when a member of the council would like to delay consideration with all due respect, that member, uh, wishes and and generally defer to that, but we need to get it properly before so we can do that. So I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-four, and then we will take action on, uh, this motion.
I'll move to adopt, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion to adopt. There's a second.
Second.
The second, the motion by Mr. Kabachi, and there is a second by Ms. Gilbert. Mr. Hoff, do you want to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we, um, take, postpone consideration until our February tenth meeting.
Very good. There's been a motion, close, postpone consideration on Mr. Hoff, and there's a second, there's a second from Mr. Kabachi. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay, the ayes seem to have the ayes have it, so we will postpone the consideration in order to allow this to mature a little further.
Okay.
Thank you. Alright, very good. The next item is adoption of annihilation plan resolution number twenty-five dash zero two, Annexation Number eighty-three. An annexation plan for certain property containing plus or minus three point five seven two acres, contiguous to and adjoining the city's existing corporate boundaries, consisting of real property identified as tax account number zero seven dash zero zero one two two three, map zero zero four six, grid zero zero two one, square zero zero three three. This property is the subject of petition for annexation, submitted by the owners of the subject property to the Mayor and Common Council of Providence. Depot.
Steph has no additional comments beyond what was provided at the public hearing, and recommend that the Mayor and Common Council adopt Annexation Plan Resolution twenty-five oh two, approving the Annexation Plan for Annexation eighty-three.
Alright, thank you very much. We have a motion, uh, to, uh, to adopt.
Need to adopt twenty-four dash eleven, Mr. President.
A motion by Mr. Kabachi to adopt, is there a second?
Uh, second, but didn't you just say twenty-five oh two?
Twenty-five oh two, jumping ahead one.
We've got quite a few here, that's fine. Um, so, um, so you're seconding, Ms. Gilbert?
Yeah, seconding, seconding the twenty-five. Yeah, seconding, seconding the twenty five oh two.
Twenty five oh two, alright. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we move on to a vote. All those in favor of adoption, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have, the ayes have it. And the annexation plan resolution is adopted. Next item is adoption of annexation resolution numbers twenty four dash eleven, annexation number eighty three, Optimal Properties LLC. Petition for annexation enlarging the corporate boundaries of the city of Westminster by annexing into the city certain property containing plus or minus three point five seven two acres uh located at the northwestern end of County Terrace, beyond its intersection with Woodside Drive, and generally to the east of Starry Night Drive, contiguous to and adjoining the city's existing corporate boundaries consisting of real property identified as tax count number zero seven dash zero zero one two two three, map zero zero four six, grid zero zero two one, parcel zero zero three three. Mr. Deepa.
Again, staff has no additional comments from what was provided at the public hearing and recommend the mayor and common council adopt annexation plan resolution twenty four eleven, approving annexation eighty three.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Deepa. I may have a motion to adopt annexation resolution number twenty four dash eleven.
Move to adopt twenty four eleven, a second.
Then a motion by Mr. Kavachi and a second by Mr. Hoff. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we will move on to a vote. All those in favor of adoption of annexation resolution number twenty four dash eleven, annexation number eighty three, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it. And the annexation resolution is adopted.
Yeah.
Item D, adoption of annexation plan resolution number twenty five dash zero three, annexation number eighty five. An annexation plan for certain property consisting, I'm sorry, containing plus or minus five point seven acres contiguous to and adjoining the city's existing corporate boundaries consisting of real property identified as tax cap number zero seven dash four three four zero eight nine, map zero zero four six, grid zero zero two one, parcel one six four eight. Which property is the subject of a petition for annexation submitted by the owners of the subject property to the mayor and common council of Westminster? Mr. Deepa.
Again, staff has no additional comments as, as those provided at the public hearing and recommend the mayor and common council adopt annexation plan resolution twenty five oh three, approving the annexation plan for annexation eighty five.
Thank you, Mr. Deepa. Is there a motion for, on adoption of validation plan resolution number twenty five dash zero three?
Move to adopt twenty five oh three, Mr. President.
There's a motion by Mr. Kavachi to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Gilbert. Any discussion? Hearing none, move on to a vote. All those in favor of adoption of annexation plan resolution number twenty five dash zero three, annexation number eighty five, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it. And the uh annexation plan resolution is adopted. Next item is adoption of annexation resolution number twenty four dash thirteen, annexation number eighty five. Now a vote of pan petition for annexation enlarging the corporate boundaries of the city of Westminster by annexing into the city certain property containing plus or minus five point four seven acres located at the western end of Glen Drive and generally to the south of the western end of Starry Night Drive, contiguous to and adjoining the city's existing corporate boundaries consisting of real property identified as tax cap number zero seven dash four three four zero eight nine, map zero zero four six, grid zero zero two one, parcel one six four eight. Mr. Deepa.
Again, staff has no additional comments from those provided at the public hearing and recommend the mayor and common council adopt annexation resolution twenty four thirteen, approving annexation eighty five.
Thank you, Mr. Deepa. May I have a motion to adopt annexation resolution twenty four dash thirteen?
Move to approve twenty four thirteen, Mr. President.
There's a motion by Mr. Kavachi to approve the adoption. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hoff. Any discussion? Hearing none, move on to a vote. All those in favor of adoption of annexation resolution number twenty four dash thirteen on annexation number eighty five, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it. And the annexation resolution is adopted.
You're earning your extra six hundred dollars a year.
I certainly am.
Pause the key even thought you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Kavachi.
Am I talking to the center of the slide?
Um, alright. Adoption of resolution number twenty five dash zero one, now moving on with the annexation. Adoption of, of resolution number forty five dash zero one, amending the adopted water and sewer allocation policy and accompanying master distribution chart to allow for sewer only allocations and to amend certain sites for consistency without substantive change. Mr. Deepa.
Thank you. City code chapter one twenty four sewers and sewage, article five allocations and extensions, section one twenty four twenty two allocation plan, and chapter one sixty water article one potable water, section one sixty one fourteen allocation policy authorizes the mayor and common council to establish a water and sewer allocation policy by resolution. Department of Community Plan Development was contacted by Carroll Adult Medical Daycare about operating an adult daycare one one O two Baltimore Boulevard, located in Carroll County in Zone C two Commercial Medium Intensity District. The property is currently served by City Sewer and a private well and is located within the water and sewer service areas. The proposed adult daycare will require additional sewer only allocation. The property is eligible to be annexed. The community plan development was also contacted by property owners who live along Winchester Drive about connecting to City Sewer. The properties are, is, are eligible to be annexed and the single family detached dwelling units along Winchester Drive are located in Carroll County, Zone R twenty thousand Residence District. City water, city water and sewer lines are existing within Winchester Drive right away. All the homes are connected with city water. However, there are a few homes that are not connected to city sewer and these homes will require additional sewer only allocation. Uh, I'm sorry, these properties are not eligible for annexation. They're, they're too far outside the boundaries. Pursuant to the water and sewer allocation policy, for a property to be granted additional water allocation that is located in the county and eligible for annexation, the property must annex into the city. And a property not eligible for annexation may obtain a good cause waiver. However, the mayor, the water and sewer allocation policy addresses sewer only emergency allocations for properties that are not currently connected city sewer services, but does not address additional sewer only allocation for properties served by city sewer. Staff met with the Water and Sewer Allocation Committee at its December tenth, twenty twenty four meeting to discuss an amendment to the Water and Sewer Allocation Policy to allow for sewer only good cause waivers similar to current water only good cause waivers. The committee supported the amendments and recommended forwarding the draft resolution and draft text to the mayor and common council to amend the water and sewer allocation policy to allow for sewer only allocations. Staff recommends the mayor and common council approve resolution twenty five oh one, amending the water and sewer allocation policy as outlined in the staff report and provided in attachments one and two of the report. And I'm available for any questions.
Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Deepa. Um, it's got a motion. We have a motion to adopt resolution number twenty five dash zero one.
A motion to adopt one, uh, resolution twenty five dash zero one.
This is a motion by Ms. Gilbert. Is there a second?
Uh, I will second, sir.
A second by Mr. Hoff. Alright. Um, any discussion or questions for Mr. Deepa?
Mr. President.
Mr. Kavachi.
Only question, how do we meter sewer only if there is no water connection?
When it's a well, like the example on one one O two Baltimore Boulevard, the well, the well will have a meter. So we will know how much water is coming out and that's assumed that much sewer is coming out, so we do, yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Good. Anyone else? Well, this seems like a prudent change to me. When we originally developed the water and sewer policy, we're mainly thinking of, you know, homes that were connected to both water and sewers, so I think this makes sense to be able to give ourselves flexibility to be able to do just sewer, you know. Maybe just sewer. Um. So, any further discussion? Move on to a vote. All those in favor of adoption of resolution number twenty five dash zero one, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it. And the resolution is adopted. Now, we will have the authority to go back and make whatever approvals are necessary.
Yes.
Very good. Alright. Thank you. Um, introduction of ordinance number twenty five, excuse me, introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty five zero two. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of Westminster adopting local map amendment L M A twenty four dash zero two, amending the zoning map for certain real property located at two 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 East Green Street, Westminster, Maryland, twenty two one one five seven, superimpose the compatible neighborhood overlay zone, C N zone, over the existing R seven seventy five hundred residential zone. The multi-family dwelling. Mr. Deepa.
Thank you. A and M LLC, the applicant submitted a request to amend the zoning map, superimposing the compatible neighborhood overlay zone or C N zone over the existing R seventy five hundred residential zone at two 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 East Green Street via a local map amendment L M A twenty four oh two. As required with this request, a concept development plan was provided with the C N zone request. The property is located in the western quadrant of the intersection of East Green Street and Ralph Street in the city of Westminster. A portion of the property along East Green Street is located in the Westminster Historic District. The property has a land use designation of urban residential in the city of Westminster Comprehensive Plan. On May twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, L M A twenty four oh two was introduced to the city's Planning and Zoning Commission. The initial development plan proposed two twenty four unit multiple family structures running on East Green Street. On August twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, the Planning and Zoning Commission held an introductory work session for L M A twenty four oh two. The applicant revised the submission to include only one building and provided two different options to the Planning and Zoning Commission to discuss during the work session. Option one was a three-story forty-eight unit multiple family development and option two was a four-story sixty-four unit multiple family development. The Planning and Zoning Commission had no issues with the mass and scale of the four-story building as the historic district had several examples of four-plus story structures and they had no issues with the site design of the development plan. On September twenty fourth, I'm sorry, September fourth, twenty twenty four, the Historic District Commission reviewed L M A twenty four oh two and provided referral comments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. On September nineteenth, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on L M A twenty four oh two. The Planning and Zoning Commission closed the public hearing and voted to forward L M A twenty four oh two to a future work session. On October seventeenth, November twenty first, and December nineteenth of twenty twenty four, the Planning and Zoning Commission held work sessions to discuss L M A twenty four oh two. At the December nineteenth meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed the development plan design, revised architectural elevations, the draft Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, and the draft ordinance applying the C N zone to the property. The commission voted to forward a favorable recommendation letter regarding the C N zone applicability and compliance for the property. That's, that's in attachment six of the report. Subsequently, the commission voted to forward ordinance twenty twenty five oh two, as provided in attachment one of the report, and accompanying development plan and the December sixth, twenty twenty four revised architectural elevation exhibits to the mayor and common council, approving L M A twenty four oh two, to superimpose a C N zone over the existing R seventy five hundred zone at the property. This time, staff recommends the mayor and common council introduce ordinance twenty five, twenty twenty five oh two and schedule a public hearing at a future mayor and common council meeting. And that completes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Deepa.
Mr. President.
Ms. Zimhols.
I just want to take a quick moment on behalf of staff to thank the planning commission. They put in an enormous amount of effort on this particular project. Um, what was brought to the planning commission is slightly different than what's brought, being brought before you. And in my personal opinion, I think it is a better product because of all the hard work that the planning commission put into it. So it's not often that we give a shout out to boards and commissions, but I want to take a moment on behalf of staff to thank the planning commission um for their hard work on this project.
Absolutely. I think it's, they put in enormous amount of work and I think it's, a lot of work for the evolution. So it seems, yeah, you know, continuously improving, you know. Um, you know, I think it's been, yes. Let's get a motion. Um, on the fail of motion on the introduction.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion for the introduction of ordinance number twenty five oh two.
Okay, thank you. So the introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty five dash two. Um, by Mr. Hoff, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gilbert. Thank you. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. President. Mr. Hoff, I do want to comment and follow up with what Ms. M. Holt said. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission, which of course I, I serve with on that ex officio, we did spend a lot of time, as you've noticed from the staff report, there were multiple meetings and I have one of our fellow members right here. And we really, you know, we really thought long and hard about what the elevations were going to look like. Uh, we took in consideration uh some of the comments that the Historic District Commission had. It was a, a very collaborative process um between ourselves, the Historic District Commission, um, and the developer uh that really come up with, uh, I think if you look at the original elevations and uh that were first admitted and compare it to the elevations that are now part of this uh L M A uh uh plan map amendment, local map amendment, uh you can really tell that it's just a much better product. Um, and I'm very excited to see, see it actually get built, so.
Thank you. I'll introduce your, all, uh, question.
Just make a note, right there?
Yeah, my, yours is perfect.
Thank you.
Um, so, thank you. Anyone else wish to hear? And thank you for also mentioning, I think this was your permission, early on, you were playing a role in raising some issues to everybody's attention and I think that was helpful as well, so.
Yeah.
Really pleased to see our, our boards and commissions work on this way, really, you know, improve uh. Is there any further discussion? Move on to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Uh, the ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and ordinance number twenty twenty five is introduced. Alright. Um, then we'll bring this back, Mr. Deep, next. I thought you were going to grouse, right?
It's not. It is, it's, the ordinance was drafted by and accepted by the planning commission. That's before you, so it does not have to go back to them. It comes back to just the mayor and common council.
No, Mr. President, eventually when the site plan gets done, that'll come back to the planning and zoning commission.
Well, that's, that's all. We're at it.
Yeah.
Alright. Um, final item under this section is introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty five dash zero three, Cannabis Overlay District Amendment, ordinance of the mayor and common council of Westminster adopting a sectional map amendment to bend the boundaries of the cannabis overlay district for the purpose of establishing the appropriate locations for the designation of cannabis overlay floating zones permitting the operation of cannabis businesses in. Mr. Deepa.
Thank you. On September twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, the mayor and common council adopted ordinance twenty twenty three oh six, Cannabis Overlay District, and ordinance of the mayor and common council of Westminster adopting a sectional map amendment to repeal the former Medical Cannabis Overlay District and designate the boundaries of a new Cannabis Overlay District. Currently, there are two cannabis dispensaries located in the city and within the Cannabis Overlay District. One is the dispensary at three thirty one forty Village Road in Westminster and two is Veralife Dispensary at seven hundred Corporate Center Court in Westminster. On October tenth, twenty twenty four, the owners of the dispensary at three thirty one forty Village Road submitted the request to extend the Cannabis Overlay District to include property located at tax map zero zero four six, grid one zero zero one six, parcel zero three oh seven, further identified as tax account oh seven zero 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 seven seven four. This property is west of and adjacent to the Sheets Development along Route one forty. The, it is the intent of the applicant to vacate the current dispensary location at three thirty one forty Village Road to relocate to this property. On December tenth, twenty twenty four, the Economic and Community Development Committee discussed the applicant's request to amend the Cannabis Overlay District to include the property. The Economic Development Committee um also discussed removing the one forty Village Road properties from the overlay district. The committee supported bringing a proposed Cannabis Overlay District Amendment to the mayor and common council for consideration. Ordinance twenty twenty five oh three Cannabis Overlay District sectional map amendment proposes to one, amend the city of Westminster zoning map, map the Cannabis Overlay District by adding the property of S stat zero seven zero 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 seven seven four into the Cannabis Overlay District, and two, to amend the zoning map, map the Cannabis Overlay District by removing the three thirty one forty Village Road and three, and three three two one forty Village Road from the Cannabis Overlay District. And three and three three two one forty Village Road from the Cannabis Overlay District. And, um. I'm sorry, I lost my recommendation here, I apologize. And with that, staff has recommended the Mayor and Common Council introduce ordinance numbers twenty. Twenty twenty five O three and refer ordinance twenty twenty five. As introduced on January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five to the Planning and Zoning Commission for its review and recommendation to the Mayor and Common Council. I would like to point out that we did receive a letter from the applicant. Asking that the existing property that's being proposed to be removed, not to be removed at this time. Allowing them to move forward with potentially moving their site and their development to that property adjacent to Sheets. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Depot. All right, let's get this introduced, may I have a motion on introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty five dash zero three?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion for the introduction of ordinance, uh, number twenty twenty five O three.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff, is there a second?
Sir.
The second by Mr. Kavachi. All right, so, um. This will go then to the planning commission, I understand there's, you know, a lot of. Ticking that needs to still take place with this perhaps, for we get it exactly the way it needs to be before it comes back to us, but that will give the planning commission. And staff the opportunity to go through those discussions.
Yes.
Very good. Any, any questions or comments?
Mr. President, my other comment would be just, let's make sure we get this worked out because that location currently has been problematic for us on numerous occasions. We've had this chamber filled on more than one occasion related to it, and I think it's going to be a much better fit. Um, down there next to Sheets and of course Sheets is going to be excited, there's going to be a lot of people with munchies going in.
Any further comments on this, hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. On introduction, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, the I seem to have it, the I have it. And ordinance number twenty twenty five dash zero three is introduced and referred to the planning. All right, next item is unfinished business, there is no unfinished business, I'm which I'm aware, everybody have any unfinished business for the Mayor and Common Council? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business here, one I want to move business, Mr. Kavachi.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that common council adjourned into a closed meeting on Monday, January twenty seven, twenty twenty five. The conclusion of the regular meeting in accordance with the general provisions of Article of the amended. Etiquette Code of Maryland three dash three oh five B three to consider the acquisition of real property. For a public purpose and matter directly related here to N B seven to consult with council to obtain legal advice.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kavachi, now the second.
Second.
The second by Ms. Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, the I seem to have it, the I have it. So I'll note that the conclusion of the regular meeting, the council will go into a closed meeting. It is not our intent to return to a regular session after the conclusion of the meeting. All right, next item is Department of Reports, Ms. Imholtz, let you lead us through all the departments.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I have two thank yous I want to say first. Um, first to the council, most of you have thanked staff tonight for a variety of really significant reasons. I just want to, I admire when you acknowledge them, I know that they appreciate it as well. So thank you for, for pointing out the things that they're doing that's important to you. Um, I want to go ahead and thank the Public Works Department, specifically the Utilities Maintenance Department. Sewer Department, the Water Department, and the Streets Department, all of which are involved in snow removal. Um, but we usually just think of Streets Department as being responsible for clearing the snow and it is their responsibility. But they certainly couldn't do it without the assistance of all those other departments, sort of stop what they're doing to help out and 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 plow the snow. And while we're talking about snow events, of course, I want to make sure we thank the Police Department. Um, who are keeping an eye on things for us as well and working some extra shifts and overtime. So thank you to the Police Department for your recent work during snow events.
Thank you.
Um, I was happy to hear the report from the Audit Farm at the beginning of the meeting. And I want to take an opportunity to thank Ms. Rogers and also her entire team. Um, for their hard work and seamless implementation of the audit process. Um, it has not been seamless since I've been here. Um, Ms. Rogers, um, of course inherited a variety of things when she got here as well. And we're finally in a place where she could have the opportunity to implement a variety of policies and procedures that are now being reflected in this audit here. So I want to make sure that the council is aware that the reason that we have that. Um, is because Ms. Rogers is keeping an eye on things, um, and also because of all the department heads who are following the procedures properly as well. So thank you, thank you. Um, I had an opportunity to pop into read off girls recently, the bookstore. Uh, they've got a lot of cool things going on this winter, they do, um, a book club, a variety of books, I think that kind of covers lots of different topics. But they also have some interesting partnerships coming up this winter with Carroll Arts Council as well as Collision Course. Um, so if you're looking for a reason to get out in the dreary cold weather, I I encourage you to pop in over there. Because there are some, there's some cool synergy happening with businesses downtown. They're certainly not the only ones doing it, but it's the one that was on top of my head that I popped into this weekend. Uh, so I wanted to make everyone aware of that. All right, let's start with the Recreation Department, Ms. Gruber.
Good evening, I'll keep it brief, um, just two things to report into or in on tonight. We started selling pool memberships back on December sixteenth and it is, uh, snow covered outside, but there are many residents thinking summer. Uh, we've already sold one hundred and eight family pool memberships. Um, and eight individual pool memberships, and it doesn't sound like a lot, but. Um, certainly not something that's on the forefront of everybody's minds racing. Um, so it's a great jumpstart on the season. We got the memberships advertised early in comparison to last year, we didn't start selling pool memberships until January twenty second. And at this time last year, we had only sold fifty five pool memberships, so over doubled, um, is the response. So we are really excited to see that, uh, moving along. And then in addition to looking forward to summer, um, we will open our summer camp registration on Monday, February third. So that concludes my report unless there are questions.
Any questions for Ms. Gruber? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Audit.
I, I think we're, it's the Celtic Cantor's coming up.
Excellent, I will make sure you are adequately, uh, registered so that you can put your training to the test.
Kavachi's been training all winter.
I got me. After any other questions, we'll move on to the IT Department, Mr. Moore.
Uh, nothing much to report tonight, we've been very, January's been very busy for us, a lot of things moving parts going on, but satisfied right now, so that's my report, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Moore? Hearing none, we're moving on to the Housing, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, nothing to report tonight, just moving stuff, moving along.
Very good, are there any questions for Mr. Moore? Hearing none, we will move over to Mr. Depot for a short report.
Taking enough time tonight.
And uh, February the fourth, on February fourth, the Board of Zoning Appeals is scheduled to hear B Z A case twenty four O five. This is an appeal of the zoning administrator, September twenty seventh, uh, twenty twenty four. Initial notice of violation for two seventy nine East Main Street. For the unapproved operation of retail sales establishment of the property, installation of signs on the property. Uh, this application was continued from the B Z A's January seventh meeting. Also scheduled to hear B Z A case twenty five O one. An amendment to the special exception multi, multiple family detached dwelling use at two seventy nine East Main Street. To allow for a thirty-two square foot sign for the multi-family use. I hope would be that would address the, the previous case, um, and the issues that came up with signage. On January sixteenth, the Planning and Zoning Commission is tentatively scheduled to review the twenty twenty four City of Westminster Annual Report. This is a planning document for the Maryland Department of Planning. And review site development plan S eighteen thirty seven by K nine Buddy. To construct a forty thousand square foot indoor dog training and event facility. The subject property is located on the northern side of Critters Church Road behind the existing sheltered systems. And that completes my report, I'm available for any questions.
What was the date of that last item?
January sixteenth.
Are there any questions for Mr. Depot? Ms. Imholtz, yes, I have a question.
I'm sorry, February, I, February sixteen.
February sixteen.
My.
Thank you.
Buddy, that was something that's come up in front of before, isn't it? It's not something new, it's like repeated.
It's, there was a text memo years ago that was adopted by the Mayor and Common Council to allow for the specific use. Um, and they're moving forward to, for that particular use, there was.
Wasn't that for near Business Park? Wasn't that supposed to be over near Business Park?
Yeah. Airport, right?
It, it, it is, that's, it's the, it's south of the airport, uh, south of the existing airport. Or in Critters Church, yeah. It's taken some time, they've been through a couple of engineers and, um, but we're finally hopefully getting to the finish line.
Trade a lot of dollars to build a forty thousand square foot building, yes, they take more of some time.
Any other questions for Mr. Depot? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Finance Department, it's Rogers.
Thank you, Ms. Imholtz, good evening, I just wanted to take the time to thank F B and Company for coming out and the presentation tonight. And just want to let the council, your council know that they've been a good partner, I feel like we've already remained independent to do this audit, they did a leadership of us. So I just wanted to report that to you. I also wanted to echo what the, um, McDaniel College Provost mentioned about the internships that we had this year, they were very mutually beneficial. Um, thanks to the intern that we had in the Finance Department, we were able to start the budget process earlier this year, so. Um, it was a good experience, it was a lot more in-depth prepare for it this year, but it was a good experience for both of us. That's the end of my report.
Any questions for the Finance Director?
No, I don't know if it's possible, maybe we should try and invite those two, young people to a council meeting.
Really think a couple of college kids wants to come and listen to us.
Presentation and I'll leave.
Who benefits?
There any other questions for the Finance Department? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Police Department, Chief Ledoff.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, um, just to add on to what Councilman Kavachi, uh, was talking about earlier. Our Department of Public Works and I T will be in doing some renovations in our dispatch room. And, um, in order to do the drywall and the floor in there, we're going to have to move the dispatch consoles. So beginning next Monday, we're going to relocate, um, one of our dispatchers back into the detective office. Um, where we have, well, one of the N C I C computers. And then we're going to move the second dispatcher temporarily out with the county. At the, one of the nine one one consoles that will operate while the renovations are underway. It won't cause any, um, disruption to service. Um, there may be some limitations on lock-in times while the construction is underway. And we'll have signage out giving directions and there's a phone investor that somebody could pick up to get ahold of us, so. Wanted to make you aware of that, we anticipated being complete with, uh, within a week to ten days, more than likely. But, uh, there's a lot of wires behind the, uh, the consoles that we're going to simplify and I T is going to help us. Create conduits that are going to be labeled and, uh, much, much more organized. That concludes my report.
Any questions for the Chief? Mr. President, that concludes the departmental reports.
All right, very good, thank you. Ms. Imholtz, um, that takes from the last item on our agenda, which is citizen concerts. Uh, this is the opportunity for the public to address the Mayor and Council on any issues pertaining to tonight's agenda or any other city issues. For citizens not attending the public meeting, we invite you to send us your comments or concerns via email at comments at westminster M D dot gov. All comments received by email will be shared with the Mayor and Council. Commenters should include their address and phone number with their comments. Now invite comments from anyone who is present this evening. It's an opportunity for, uh, the public to share their thoughts and concerns with the Mayor and Council. Uh, ask anyone who wishes to be heard to please give us your name and address for the record. To anyone who wishes to be heard tonight. Ms. Imholtz.
Hearing none, one nine five West Main Street, I'd like to think that the Police Department saved the life of one of my tenants on Friday before last. And he would not be alive today if they had not arrived when they did.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Yes, sir, I'm Aviva Rochelle, I'm the owner of, uh, Carroll Adult Medical Daycare. Thank you guys for, uh, approving the, uh, annexation thing. Um, we've been working very hard, it's taken a long time, and we've dumped, dumped a lot of money into this already. And we're just hoping to, uh, get the permits already and start the construction. It's not going to be too, too much stuff that we got to do there. But, um, hopefully if you guys are all on board, seems like you are. We, we want to try to open by the end of this year or before that and, uh, they can probably just through the, you know, the more output we'll give us, so.
All right.
I appreciate you guys.
All right, very good, thank you, all right, anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you all for, uh, for joining us this evening, that concludes our agenda, the end of the meeting. Our next regular meeting will be Monday, February tenth. With that, I hope Ms. Imholtz is wrong about this note. Um, thank you.